Good evening and welcome to the Candidates Forum presented by the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. My name is Carrie Moon Dupree and I am President of the Northwest Wayne County League. Tonight, we welcome the candidates running for the Plymouth City Commission. We thank the city of Plymouth for allowing us to use their facility for this public education event. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We do not support or oppose any candidate running for any office. The League does take positions on issues after careful study, so you may see our name attached to an issue that we're advocating for or opposing. Membership in the League is open to all citizens who are at least 16 years old, so if you're interested in joining this public service organization, please let us know. Membership applications are available here tonight and at our website, l w v northwest wayne dot org. The League's main mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation in government. One of the ways we do that is by having forums such as this one tonight. The League has also prepared a nonpartisan voter guide which can be found online at www.vot411.org. By typing in your voting address, you can view the races on your ballot and the candidates' responses to questions posed by the League. You can also find the link to the voter guide on our website. These addresses are provided on these three bookmarks which are available at the table in the back of the room. If you would like to ask a question of the candidates, and we certainly encourage this, please write your question on a card and hand it to one of the ushers in the aisles. Our moderator will ask as many questions as time allows. Questions should be brief, to the point, and should not include a personal attack on any of the candidates. We reserve the right to screen the questions for duplication and clarity. At this time, we ask all of our audience members to please be sure their cellphones are silenced. Election Day is November 7th. If you are not registered to vote, you can do so up through Election Day. Within 14 days of the election, registration must be done at the office of your city clerk. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., but all registered voters can vote early by absentee ballot. Remember that you first must fill out and return an absent ballot application to your city or township clerk before a ballot can be mailed to you. If you need an absentee ballot application, contact your city clerk. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and not of the League of Women Voters. Now, I would like to introduce you to our moderator, League member and co-president of the Michigan League of Women Voters, Paula Bowman, who will provide you with more details about tonight's forum.
Thanks, Carrie. Good evening. My name is Paula Bowman, and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. All seven candidates running for the four seats on the Plymouth City Commission are here tonight. In alphabetical order, they are Catherine Colburn, Susie Deal, Linda Phillipsack, Brock Minton, Kelly O'Donnell, Ross Picard, and Josh Ramatsky. The top three vote-getters earn four-year terms, and the fourth-place finisher wins a two-year term. Candidates chose a number from a sack when they first came in, which has determined their order of placement on the stage, so they're not in alphabetical order on the stage. As Carrie said, our questions tonight are coming from the audience, but we've also received certain questions by email in advance. Each candidate at this forum will be allowed a one-minute opening statement, a one-minute response to all the questions, and a one-minute closing statement. We will rotate the order of the candidate who responds to questions first. League member Valerie Nelson will be our timer tonight. She'll be holding up cards so that the candidates know when their time is up. The candidate must stop when the stop sign appears. And now, we're ready to go. Mr. Minton, we'll get started with you. Could you please introduce yourself and give us your one-minute opening statement?
Absolutely. So, I want to start off by thanking the League of Women Voters, my fellow Commissioner candidates, and you, the public, for being here today and making this event happen, being engaged in this process. So, my name is Brock Minton. I only have a minute here, but I wanted to introduce myself and give a little bit of background. I have a degree in engineering from Purdue University. I work as a quality manager in the steel industry. And I moved to the city with my wife, Jessica, about five years ago. And we moved here because we wanted to live in a place that was walkable, that was safe, and where you could get to know your neighbors. Plymouth checked all those boxes for me and more. Since moving here, we've found a core group of neighbors that we spend most of our time with, that we've come to see as family, a group we call Plymouth Paws. They've made our lives immensely better in this city, and that's why I'm running for City Commission. I want Plymouth to continue to be a place that's desirable to live and where people can get to know their neighbors and feel a real sense of belonging in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell, your opening statement, please.
Thank you so much. Hello, I'm Kelly O'Donnell, and the truth is, I'm just a regular person like you, a mom, a wife, a friend, who really just wants to keep Plymouth a great place to live, work, and play. I'm an 18-year resident of the city of Plymouth. I'm a small-business owner, co-founder of Keep Plymouth Leafy, and a first-term city commissioner. I'm running for reelection because I feel I can offer voters informed, proven leadership that continues to move our city forward in a positive direction. There's a lot to be excited about in Plymouth, and I hope to be able to shape policy decisions that impact our city in the next four years. Some of those I'm excited about include maintaining, updating, and expanding our parks and recreation system, building on the momentum in Old Village, and executing our 2024 master plan, which will be our shared community vision for the Plymouth of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ramatsky, your opening statement, please.
Yes. Wonderful, and thank you for having us. Good evening. My name is Josh Ramatsky. I'm a seventh-generation Michigander, and I had the privilege of growing up in the area along with my five siblings and one very fluffy Australian shepherd. I spent my summers working as a golf caddy and would often visit Plymouth in my free time for a movie or an ice cream cone with friends and family. I was fortunate to receive the Evans Scholarship and went on to study finance and strategy at the Ross School of Business at the University of Michigan. I've lived in cities all over the world, from New York to Barcelona, but there's nowhere I'd rather live than right here in Plymouth. As a homeowner, I would like to serve as a voice for other homeowners and residents as we chart a path for the next stage of responsible growth here in Plymouth. My background in community service and my financial skill set will enable me to get the job done effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Deal, your opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out this evening. It's always great to see a great grouping of our residents come for these type of events. My name is Susie Deal. I've lived here in the community for over 30 years. My husband and I kind of stumbled upon Plymouth after we were married, both thinking that this was just going to kind of be a stepping stone for us until we moved to a different community. And once we were here, we fell in love with the community. We raised our three boys here. I was always very active in their schooling, in their sports, just always taking a role in what was going on with them. So, once we became empty nesters, I decided that it was time to put my energies towards something else, and I picked the community. I first started serving on the Planning Commission. I served there for three years and realized that that was not the perfect fit for me. And at that time, I was asked to serve on City Commission. I'm completing my eighth year on City Commission, and I feel like it's just a growing process, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. And I look forward to representing our residents and going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Phillipsack.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Linda Phillipsack, and I have lived in Plymouth for over 30 years. I knew I wanted to be in Plymouth when I was a teenager in Dearborn Heights and would ride my bike down here and thought, "This is the place to be." I am a Mercy College of Detroit graduate. I have a nursing degree, and I have my master's MBA. I work at Carmelo's Cancer Institute as an oncology nurse as well as a philanthropy officer. I feel that my experience in not only oncology but as well as my career has exponentially helped me in this role. I've been on the five years helping the city. I've been on the Historical District Committee for three years. And then, I was asked to consider running for election for the Commission, and I said yes. And I've been serving for two years. So, I've enjoyed it. I think we have a lot to do in this city, but we have a gem. Our historical district embraces who we are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Picard, your opening statement.
First, thanks for having us and organizing it. My name is Ron Picard. And why I'm here, it's always been in my blood to volunteer. Since I was a junior in high school, I volunteered to coach our Church's Girls basketball team. I've been on the boards of churches and choirs that I've sung in. It's always been who I am. So, as I'm approaching retirement, December was my target date, and you have two questions when you retire. Can I afford it, and what am I going to do? And so, this answers one of them. If I'm elected, this is what I will do. But why would you want me? I grew up, again, not in Plymouth but close. I grew up straight down Ann Arbor Trail. I'm fourth of nine kids. We've lived in Westline. And so, when we went out to do something, most of the time, we'd come out to the pen because it was a dollar back then. And $9, nine kids, it seemed to work out pretty good that way. So, I just hope to continue on in this role. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Picard. Ms. Colburn.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Catherine Colburn. Thank you so much for being here. Plymouth has a special place in my heart since I was a young girl. I'm one of eight, big Irish family. So, so many memories coming here to Plymouth to visit my grandfather, to see my aunt get married, and whisk away in a horse-and-drawn carriage to the hotel that we had the reception at. It was always magical coming here, going to the Penn Theater with my grandmother and seeing E.T. and having our snacks together, going to the Mayflower for brunch. So many great memories here. My background, I've been in the hospitality industry for over 30 years. I also have served on many boards, such as being the fundraiser events chairperson for my daughter's Montessori school, coaching, junior achievement, et cetera. I look forward to being an addition to this commission and look forward to working with everyone. Thanks again. I appreciate all of you.
Thanks to all of you for your opening statements. We'll start the questions now with Mr. Minton. What do you see as the most pressing issue for the city?
Thank you for the question. I think one of the most pressing issues for the city is infrastructure, and that can take form in many different ways. I think walkability, something I mentioned in my opening statement, is key for the city, and I want to expand opportunities for that. I think there are opportunities in Old Village to expand walkability to make it safer. I appreciate that there have been the different beacons added across the city so you can press them and move across safely. I want to add more of those. In Old Village, looking specifically at Stark Weather and Mill Street, right now, it can be dangerous to cross parts of those, and I'd like to see more walkability there. Thank you.
Ms. O'Donnell, your response?
The biggest challenge. So, I think one challenge that has threaded through all of the issues that I have looked at over the last four years has been how to do the same or more with less. Less reliable state funding and revenue share coming to our cities and trying to figure out how do we maintain the standard of living and the quality of services that our city provides to our residents with ever less funding. And so, that's been a challenge that has reared up as I've been in this leadership role. Some of the ways that we've addressed that have been looking at community partnerships, so partnering with nonprofit organizations to stretch a dollar, grant-making organizations, so always being creative and innovative, looking for funding solutions. And I would continue to do that certainly because I don't think those challenges are going to go away.
Thank you. Mr. Ramatsky.
Yeah, thank you. So, I think the largest issues the city's facing, after having spoken with a lot of my neighbors, are really government transparency, reliable infrastructure, and having a sense of fiscal responsibility. Sometimes, it feels like the government makes some decisions, like they put the cart in front of the horse, so to speak. I'd like to see a little bit more community involvement, maybe some more citizen forums, kind of involving people at the start at the conversation. Also, prioritizing certain infrastructure things like roads and even our utilities, not that we control them, but leaning into those companies and making sure that they hold up their end of the bargain. And finally, having a sense of fiscal responsibility. I've spoken with a lot of people that have just moved to the city, and they pay a tremendous amount of taxes. Would like to try to work on keeping operating efficiency at its highest while still providing our citizens with the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Deal.
It's interesting. I don't like to look at these as pressing issues or challenges for our community. I like to look at them as to ways that we can improve our community. Do we have pressing issues? Yes, we do. But we have a wonderful community here. And piggybacking on what Kelly said, yes, we offer a lot of great services. And how can we continue to do that within our community and keep us growing and changing? We can't become a stagnant community. And so, what is it, the things that we can do to keep us growing? You know, we face challenges from lack of funding. We face challenges with recreation issues that we have. We face challenges in everything that we do. So, I think it's important for us to communicate as a team and to look at ways that we can plan for us to continue to grow as a community and to maintain those services and staying, yes, transparent to the citizens and getting citizens' involvement.
Thank you. Ms. Phillipsack.
Thank you. I think we have many issues that have been brought to us as city commissioners and sitting on the dais. We look at those issues as they come to us one at a time. Yes, we have funding issues, but we work with the city administration. And those that are not engaged with the city administration, they don't realize what a phenomenal team we have at the city that work collaboratively with us and provide us information so that we can make informed decisions moving forward. I think if we look at, we have parking concerns, but we're looking at those issues as a group collaboratively. We're looking at parks and recreations, trying to build our city because we're a destination, and that's what we want to be, a destination that is historic and has the ambiance that everyone else wants to come here for. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Picard.
A little along the same lines. We are a destination city. I mean, when I was growing up, this was the place to come. And I think throughout the state, Plymouth is known. And one of the reasons we have that is we're lucky enough that we're still charming. We're not cookie cutter. We don't have all the box stores in town. We have a couple franchises, but there's just a lot of private restaurants, still small shops in the area. And I think in order to keep Plymouth what it is, we need to support them. And when you talk to, I gave my haircut in town, and when you mention paid parking, you know, all he says is that's going to add, you know, four or five bucks to the price of a haircut. And so, when we need to look at each of the issues, we need to keep the residents first, residents happy first, and then our businesses are second. We just need to make sure that we're supporting each and every one of them so that we can keep Plymouth what it is.
Thank you. Ms. Colburn.
Well, I work in the hospitality industry, so every day, I'm in the city. I'm seeing people come in to Campari, Fiamma Sardine Room. We're all one big happy family. That's who I proudly work for. And I absolutely love it when people come in with big smiles on their face, and they talk about how much they love our city, our restaurants, our small businesses, our festivals, the Penn Theater, everything that truly makes up the heartbeat of our city. I don't look at it as pressing issues. I look at it as positive. That's truly what we have. We are a gem. We are known for being a destination city. So, I look forward to, you know, being the voice for hospitality, for good, bad, what have you, you know, and continuing to have what we are known for. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll start this next question with Ms. O'Donnell. It appears that high-end homeowners or business owners sometimes receive preferential treatment from the city. If elected, how will you serve the entire community equitably?
Gosh. I hope this is not true. My assumption is that this is not true, that we treat all of our residents and developers and everyone who comes through the city doors the same and equally. That's really important to me. I have, a couple of years ago, I created a builder code of conduct to make sure that our builders that come into our community are good neighbors in our neighborhoods. And so, I think that that sort of attention to the groups that come into our city is something that we're responsible for taking care of and looking out for as it relates to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ramatsky.
Yes, thank you. So, I believe in a form of servant leadership, and being a good servant means treating everyone fairly. So, I happen to live in a smaller house in the city, but I'm surrounded by some larger beautiful homes. And anytime I've had to interact with the city, it's been very positive. I'd like to continue that tradition going forward and treat everyone equally and fairly under the code of ordinances that we have and with the services that we offer. Thank you.
Ms. Deal.
Yeah, I would agree. I would hope that we're not having that happening in our community. I think we work very hard, administration, with our ordinances and our codes that we have set in place. We do, when a business comes into town, everybody has the same checklist that they have to follow. Builders, they have the same checklist that they have to follow. And we do find, if we do find that it's not being followed, we do have the personnel that goes through and will correct some of those situations that happen. I do believe in the process. I do believe in following the ordinance and the rules that are set. I treat everybody in that same fashion, no matter what business that's coming to us, no matter what development that's coming to us. I know when it's brought to us, I will look at them, each one individually, and go back to each individual department to make certain that they are also adhering to the rules that were set for our community.
Thank you. Ms. Phillipsack.
I have to say that I have not seen that as an issue as a private citizen as well as someone that has served the city on the HDC as well as a city commissioner. When we were on the HDC, we had rules and regulations that were set by the state as well as nationally, and each business was assessed according to the historical aspect and any kind of renovations. I live on a street that has, when I live in a small home, that has had many different big houses built, and we all have the same rules and regulations with regard to setbacks, our houses, et cetera. And we work collaboratively with each of the commissions. There's policies, there are procedures, and we review them and update them accordingly on a yearly basis. When we have questions or concerns, we bring them back to the committees and then have a discussion at the commission level. So, I believe that we are adhering to the rules and regs that we have put in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Picard.
I think when it comes to houses, part of the charm is we're not a cookie cutter city, so I'm not aware of any situation where that happened with houses. I think I can come up with one with businesses, though, with the new whiskey bar that's going in. The rules were that businesses, if they served liquor, were supposed to have a kitchen, and they were granted a waiver for that. A waiver is the official term or not, but they don't have a kitchen. They were allowed to open up a pot. And while I think that's going to be a great business, I think it'll be an asset to the city. I think we need to simplify our rules so that we're not targeting specifically what we want. We're making worse, coming up with a set of rules that allow the businesses to grow in a way that this city is told.
Thank you. Ms. Colburn.
Thank you. So, first things first, when I'm elected this coming November 7th, I will always represent the city and have your concerns first and foremost. I will care, I will listen, and I will always make sure everyone is treated equally. I'm from Old Village, you know? A lot of people are like, "Oh, you live in Old Village." I love our community, and I especially love Old Village. Everybody's so friendly. You walk down the street, we all have strong community development down there, and I look forward to seeing it flourish. So, with that being said, just to wrap it up, because I've got that 30-second warning, which I talk a lot, but I'm just passionate. I'm passionate about doing what's right, and that's always been me since December 15th, 1971. I will always be me and always be true. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Minton.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So, I think it is important to follow the code of conduct and ethics rules that are out there, update them if necessary. I have also not heard of specific instances of this happening, so an example would definitely be helpful. But I know that no matter what happens, anything that comes up, if I'm elected to City Commission, it's important to be objective in your decisions. It's important to understand where people are coming from, use empathy, but at the end of the day, to come to the objectively correct decision. As a quality manager, I'm very familiar with that concept. Even if something doesn't go right, you have to be honest and tell the truth about it. And so, that's what I would do as City Commission. I can think of one thing between downtown and Old Village, for example, that there could be some more investment in Old Village, and that's something that I'd like to see going forward. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll begin this third question with Mr. Ramatsky. What is your position on recreational cannabis dispensaries in the city? Is your position concerning cannabis dispensaries and establishments who serve liquor the same?
Thank you for your question. That's a loaded one. So, yeah, you know, I saw the woman who was going around with the petition like a lot of us did that weekend, well, throughout a number of weeks, I think, and, you know, I think she was being paid by an outside party interested in opening up shop here in Plymouth. I believe in what the residents have to say. They've been pretty clear that they don't want that here in Plymouth. I support whatever the residents want going forward. I would separate that from alcohol. I think they are two different things entirely. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Deal.
I would separate those also. As for the liquor licenses, we are one of the only few communities here in the state that does cap our liquor licenses, how many restaurants we do allow here in town. We do review that yearly to see if it should be raised. I believe in that. I don't want us to become a town of just restaurants. And as for allowing cannabis into the city, personally, I don't think this is the town for it. I would vote in the way that the residents, the people, but how they feel about it, if that is something that I'm hearing in the community that people would be interested in, then I would be open for that discussion. I just don't feel that that is something that is needed here in downtown Plymouth right now.
Thank you. Ms. Phillipsack.
Yes. With respect to alcohol and cannabis, they are two separate issues. If you look at the alcohol, we do do an annual review of our liquor licenses, and we have a discussion and look to see what's best for the city at the time. We have raised it in the past several years, and it meets our needs. We are 2.2 miles. Another thing that we need to look at is, for me, as a city commissioner, I look at what my constituents have to say, and that includes the citizens as well as the business owners and the restaurateurs. And we have to listen to our constituents and hear what they're saying. We've had surveys. And regarding cannabis, that is not something that has been wanted in the downtown area. And we have to be cognizant of those things and embrace who we represent, not put our personal opinions in, also who we represent. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Picard.
This was a big one for me.
This was a big one for me. When I came across a woman asking for her signatures, I, I don't want to say freaked out, but it bugged me a lot, and I started to look into it. It is an outside group. They, it's one real estate developer who specializes in cannabis real estate, and she's been going throughout the state, city by city, to try to get more dispensaries. In the last election, they spent over $46,000 to get it passed in Brighton. So this was big enough that I actually talked my wife and did I want to put running for commission on hold just so I could fight that proposal. It's something we don't want, or the residents have said, they don't want it downtown, they don't want it anywhere in the city. And I will do my best. Fortunately, we, it's not on the ballot, so we have a year, we can look into it if there's anything we can do to prevent this in the future or to minimize the damage that this might happen. I think we should do that.
Thank you. Ms. Coburn.
Thank you so much. So we attend the commission meetings on a regular basis, and I recall that evening when it was brought up, was tabled for discussion, and somebody had said on this board, you should be concerned three times. Not that I have the inside scoop three times. It might end up on a ballot. Fast forward to July 4th, when I was with a dear friend of mine at the parade, we did see the person collecting signatures. So with that being said, liquor and marijuana are two different things. And when the city strongly said, we're not for it, it doesn't matter what I think, it matters what our residents think. They've already spoken, so basically, end of discussion. What I think doesn't matter. What you guys think and your voice will always matter to me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Minton.
I also think that alcohol and marijuana are two separate issues. I do not support having dispensaries in the city in Old Village or downtown Plymouth, anywhere in the city. We've, I've heard a few times that those surveyed from the city don't support it. I personally also don't support it. I think that we also need to pay attention that voters did approve a few years ago to make recreational marijuana legal. I think it's been great for additional state tax revenue. It's been great for decriminalization. But I'm also thankful that it gave municipalities like the city of Plymouth discretion on if they want to have dispensaries, how many and where. So like I said, I wouldn't support having any in the city anywhere. There are plenty of options for people to choose in the greater metro Detroit area. Plymouth does not need to be one of those. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes, I have looked at this issue every year for the four years that I've been on commission, investigated and looked at the pros and cons of the legal, kind of social and financial ramifications of the decision. I'm on record not supporting this each year, and there's a couple of reasons. One, it's still federally illegal. I'm sworn to uphold the rule of law, and that really is a personal conflict for me, as long as it's federally illegal. Number two, the revenue share from the state is too small to even cover the standing up of Marijuana Regulation Department in the city. It's about $58,000 in 2022. It's not even enough to cover policing. And number three, it's landed a lot of cities in court, frankly, for how they decide who to give permits to. So there's a lot of reasons to be cautious. We've been cautious to this point, and that's been my position thus far.
Thank you. Ms. Steel, you'll answer this question first. Do you support Proposition 1, the Parks and Rec Millage proposal? Why or why not?
I think this is an easy one. I do support it. It's been unfortunate that, as much as we try to partner with other communities, not everybody wants to tangle, and it takes two to tangle. And in order for us to keep our recreation department and our parks current, this is something that I do feel we need to do. We have an 800 little persons soccer program right now that we do not have soccer fields for. So unless we can find land to do this, that program itself will probably have to diminish. I believe in improving our Parks Department, and unfortunately, we don't get federal, or the funding from the state that is due us, so this is a way for us that we can do this. Again, coming to the voters, asking you if this is what you want, nothing is set in stone, but I do feel that we have a good guideline out there as to what it is we want to do for the community, and I do think that it will benefit the community as a whole.
Thank you. Ms. Phillipsack.
Yes, I support it 100%. I think as commissioners, we'd be remiss if we didn't bring it to our citizens, understanding that, yes, it is a millage, yes, it will be additional dollars to us, but the end result is 100% to us as homeowners. It'll provide us a soccer field, it'll provide us dollars to improve our parks. Stop and take a look at the parks around all of your homes and see if they are in need of repair. I have noticed them as I bike ride around the city. And it allows our homes to become more marketable, it becomes a destination again for individuals wanting to live in Plymouth, and it makes sure that we have a plan moving forward and not just being stagnant. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Picard.
Well, this one's going to be tough for me because I don't support it, and I'm probably going to come across as that grumpy old, you know, old fart that doesn't like parks. And trust me, that's not true. I do volunteer coach in the soccer program. My other nephew was on one of the teams that had to move to Northville because we don't have an 11v11 field in the city. So it's not that I don't understand the need for more money in the parks, but this millage, I just, I think it has flaws. Part of the millage states that the money can be used to operate and maintain the parks as opposed to just improving the facilities. The city kind of pointed this out during the informational program where they said they will give residents discounts when they register their kids because they don't want to be taxed twice. Well, that means the rest of us are being taxed once for these soccer programs, and we're subsidizing players from other cities. And in the 2018 to 22 Rec Master Plan, it stated that a community our size...
Thank you, Mr. Picard. Ms. Coburn, your response?
Thank you so much. I love Parks and Rec. I've coached soccer for seven years and softball for five. When I was growing up, they fed us, we were outside playing. I have spent so many countless hours, cherished memories, Parks and Rec. We definitely have growing pains. We're running out of fields for the kids to play in. We have a tremendous recreation program, such as, not only for kids, but for adults, such as Citizens Academy, which I was so proudly able to attend and talk about it to anybody who wants to hear me listen. So I do support the Parks and Rec. We've got to continue to grow. We're running out of place, and I don't want to see any of these, you know, soccer teams, you know, diminish. That's the last thing I want to happen here in our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Minton.
So I'm very supportive of Proposition 1 because the Recreation Department is an excellent way to draw people from the region and for residents to connect with one another. I have met dozens of my neighbors personally through Recreation Department activities, and this millage will further expand those opportunities for people of all ages. It will also revitalize our neighborhood parks, important gathering spaces for everybody in our community, but especially young families. It's where the youngest in our community make lifelong friends, it gives kids an alternative to electronic devices, and it's important venues for community gatherings. If it passes, all the improvements will be prioritized and approved through the city commission. It's important to note that. My priorities would be to focus on Old Village Parks specifically, I think Point Park would be a great example, and the Lumber Mart acquisition to get more green space in the city. Outside of that, I think priority should be for mixed-use fields. That's a great way to utilize the limited space that we have in the city, and I'd like to expand sports for adults and seniors organized and ran by the City Recreation Department. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes, I'm very supportive of Proposal 1. This is an area of our city that's really needed a lot of attention for many years. Recreation facilities and programs are cited in citizen surveys as one of the most important factors to a high quality of life here in Plymouth, and an increase in demand for both quantity and the diversity of our recreation programming, a chronic underfunding of our Parks and Rec facility compared to other cities of our size, and the opportunity to purchase a blighted piece of land and turn it into an all-ages-and-abilities park space is rare in our fully-built two-mile city. So I'm excited about this investment opportunity as a way to make significant capital improvements in every neighborhood park, reduce residents' fees for participation in programs, and it's a once-in-a-generation opportunity to create new and innovative Parks and Recs facilities in our city.
Thank you. Mr. Romatsky.
Yeah, thank you. So I live directly adjacent to a city park, and it's wonderful. I go out there almost every day. I think I could tell you what the most popular brand of stroller is, and imagine it's fairly But I do think this is one area where communication could have been a little bit better, you know. This millage is asking for more than 30% more money than the Rhodes Millage did in 2019, and the roads are still being worked on. So I think a little bit more communication with residents first would have been better just to figure out what we actually need and what could have waited, you know, don't want to put too much work on our already fairly lean city staff. But that being said, if I'm elected, I look forward to working with residents, if this millage passes, to figure out what exactly they want to see in their neighborhood with our current parks that are wonderful and with future parks that could also be additionally great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Phillipsack will start this next question with you. How involved should the city commission be with the day-to-day operations of the city since the city employs a city manager?
That's a great question. And for me, I compare it to me as a professional. As a nurse in organizations, we have residents that come in and residents that go out as they train. We are like the residents that are coming into the city as commissioners. We work collaboratively with our city commission. They are spot on. I've never seen in my career of 40 years a better team run by our city manager, all of our directors and all of our team members, they work collaboratively. They provide us with information. We don't need to do their job, we need to let them do their job so they can provide us the information we need to make an informed decision when it comes to the commission. And I applaud them. I am honored to work with them and for them because what they do for us is phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Picard.
I mentioned earlier that, you know, hopefully this will be my retirement job. And while we do hire the city staff, it's our job to, or would be our job to oversee that, and I would take that very personally. I'd love to be able to go every week to a different department meeting just to sit in and see what they need, see what they're doing, and what the city can do to help and what may need more improvement. Catherine mentioned Citizen Academy, and one of the things that you come out of there realizing is everybody who works for the city loves working for the city, and they talk about their atmosphere. It's really is something to behold, but that doesn't reduce the oversight. I mean, we, the commission hires a city manager and then has to take serious, you know, overseeing that. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Coburn.
Thank you. So as we have mentioned a couple of times, we've got a couple of Citizen Academy graduates here, and I absolutely loved it. We went to each department, and we got to learn, and it was consistent, the vibe, the passion they have of what they do, and they just could go on and on, and you could hear it in their tone of voice, and they were very open with all of us residents in regards to what questions we had. And I carry this in my wallet, and I got this from one of my favorite city managers, Paul Sinkcock. Five rules for decision-making. Is it right for the community? Is it right for the city? Is it legal and ethical? Does it fit within our policies and procedures? Is it something for which I'm willing to be accountable for? I carry that with me, and I have that true to my heart, and I'm so thankful to have such a great team. Again, we have a tremendous city, and I look forward to being a part of this team when I win. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Minton.
Thank you for the question. So the commissioner-manager, city manager style of government is very common for a municipality of our size in the state of Michigan. It's important to distinguish the roles between those two, though. So commissioners make the strategic decisions for the city. What direction do we want to go as a city? And then the city administration executes those. They decide, how do we tactically get that done? How do we make sure that the city runs effectively? Think DMS, for example. How do we make sure that we plow the streets? Those are things that the city administration needs to take care of. And the fiscal approval and fiscal responsibility comes down to the city commissioners. It's important to distinguish that the city manager ultimately reports to the city commission. And I want to close by saying that I think we do have a great administration here, and we have very dedicated workers in the city of Plymouth, and I'm very thankful for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes, I have four years of experience with this relationship, and it is a very important role of oversight. We are not involved in the day-to-day, nor should I be involved in the water mains and, you know, those technical issues. We're best left of the professionals, but the oversight and the checks and balances that the city commission provides for city administration is one of our most important roles. Brock mentioned strategic planning, and so the strategic planning process that the city commission engages in usually every January sets the objectives that the city administration then can work on executing tactically. So that relationship has seemed to, has worked really well, and so I think we have that balance, but always remembering that we do have an oversight role to play with ultimately the city manager.
Thank you. Mr. Romatsky.
Yeah, thank you. So as Brock said, I think it's a very common form of government. For a municipality of our size, the city government really does, I'm sorry, the city administration does a phenomenal job with the resources they have. You know, if a boiler tomorrow in the cultural center starts to act funny, I guarantee you there's someone who knows exactly what's going on, and they're going to be there within 10 minutes to fix it. And you don't get that in a lot of places. I worry that some of that institutional knowledge might be lost, though, in the future, so I'd like to continue working on succession planning for the city administration that has all that institutional knowledge so that we have the resources to continue having that same level of operational excellence in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Steel.
Yes, thank you. We do have a wonderful administration here. We're very fortunate, and if you've attended Citizens Academy, you will see that. The many hats that our employees wear, it's just phenomenal. They will cross over departments, they will work in whatever department needs to be. So we are very fortunate with that. As a city commissioner, I take a lot of pride in working collaboratively with the administration. Yes, I love setting the strategic goals, planning what we want to do for the city, looking at what we need to be done. They hold us to the day-to-day operations, and then they let us think about, okay, what can we do to better this community? We do have a great succession plan in place. I think that our city manager has done a wonderful job with that, that I don't care what position you look at within this, with any of the departments, there is somebody already in line for that. It's important to remember that, yes, the city commissioner or the city manager does report to the commission, however, we do not hire staff. Department heads hire their own staff department. We are just responsible for the city manager. But it is a great working relationship.
Thank you all. Mr. Picard, we'll start this next question with you. Where do you stand on paid parking in the city?
I get to start that one. The issue I have with paid parking is, I mentioned earlier, it does hurt the small businesses, but it's putting the cart before the horse. I think we need to evaluate and come up with a plan of what we need parking-wise, whether it's a new deck or overhaul the existing deck, if there's five properties that we might want, that we might have our eye on, okay, let's pretend we can get three of them. Let's come up with an overall price tag and then start worrying about how we're going to pay for it. But turning on a spigot of revenue, which is paid parking now, in the hopes that we'll use it at some point in the future later, I just think that's backwards.
Thank you. Ms. Coburn.
Well, guess what I hear? Let me turn my mic on. Every day I hear this in regards to parking. I live it. We have a lot of people that work in this city every day. Think about all the restaurants we have, that parking structure we have, we have a three-hour on the bottom and an eight-hour at the top. For most of us that work in the hospitality industry, we're there past eight hours, and we run out of spots all the time. The number-one complaint I hear is, I'm sorry I was late for my reservation, where do I park? I think something needs to be done to address this. It's not going to go away. We want to be able to make it a friendly, you know, accessible for everyone to find a correct parking spot and for safety. I know we could table this some more. I look forward to be a part of the solution so everyone has that concern. I work in downtown, I walk from Old Village, I can walk quicker to my nail appointment on Forest Avenue than finding a parking spot. Thank you so much.
Mr. Minton.
Yeah, thank you again for the question. So overall, I am opposed to the idea of paid parking. I think free parking is a public good, and it's helpful for local businesses. With any issue, though, I do think it's important to see the pros and cons of any idea. So to go through that really quickly from my perspective, the benefits of having paid parking is that it can generate more revenue for the city to pay for road and infrastructure repair, and it charges those who are driving and parking. It spreads that repair burden around instead of just on city residents. It will also help limit the amount of people parking for long periods of time. We've heard this issue of not having enough spaces. But the drawbacks are that it's a hassle to use parking meters or apps. I'm sure we've all been to a place that needs them, and it's a pain. There's no getting around it. It is annoying. It could also negatively affect local businesses. You'd need increased enforcement to even enforce the idea. And there's potential for people to just park in the neighborhoods instead, which we don't want either. So overall, I think the pros don't outweigh the cons here, so I'm opposed to paid parking. I think some parking solutions like Saxton's Lot are great things that we could do instead.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell.
Yeah, so the city commission actually heard a presentation earlier in this year by the administration about the costs, potential costs and revenue generation of the system. And it kind of served as the endpoint to this go-around of many of discussions about paid parking. I didn't see any numbers in that presentation. That really gave me a huge appetite to continue the conversation. I'm only one commissioner. We have not, as a commission, voted to implement paid parking yet, and I personally don't see this coming back before the commission in the near future. But our costs to maintain the surface lots and the deck and to expand parking spaces are not going away, unfortunately. And so we, as a community, need to think about how we prioritize those costs and how we plan for them going forward. It's just, there's just not, there's not an easy solution. We would have, we would have found it by now, I think.
Mr. Ramatsky.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm also not in favor of paid parking. I looked at the model that the consultants brought together back then. I also did not find it very financially compelling. But even more important than that, you know, I don't look at our downtown and see dollars. I think of our city, and I don't really think it's in keeping with the character of the city. That being said, the city manager famously says, no parking is free parking, and that's very true. We pay for it. We pay through our tax dollars. And a lot of people in Plymouth and outside of Plymouth come to enjoy that parking. The main parking structure is at about 80% of its useful life. And I would hate to see 10 years from now that come up as a surprise millage, that we have to fix the parking structure. So I would like to start planning now for that obsolescence and thinking about ways that we can also add to the parking inventory when that either large renovation or total, you know, remodel does occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Phillipsack.
No need.
I'm sorry. Ms. Deal.
Good, I don't have to answer this one. Go for it. So ever since I've been on commission for eight years now, I feel like every year we've talked about paid parking and what do you do with paid parking, right? Do you bring it in? Do you not bring it in? And yes, there is a cost for parking. Am I in favor of paid parking? You know, the numbers right now for me do not support it. Do I think that we have some background work to do about paid parking or to figure out our parking situation here in downtown? I do. The cost to replace the parking structure would be astronomical. So that really may not necessarily be a choice for us to do that. Are there other ways that possibly we can find parking? Yes, there are. At the end of the day, I guess personally, I am not in favor of paid parking at the moment. I think that as a commission, we, if we want to revisit this topic, there's some background work that we would need to do to put a plan in place on how we would handle parking. And we would listen to what the residents would have to say about it as well.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Phillipsack.
I am not in favor of paid parking. And I think we need to look at creative ways, which we have with the city commission and with the city administration, of what we can do for repairing our lots and looking at parking and seeing how we can creatively bring on more parking. We'll be expanding our parking lot at the Saxton, which they're in the process of doing now. I think one of my concerns is if we had paid parking, it could be a deterrent, and it would run individuals from coming to our beautiful city, which we want it to be the destination. And then I also have a concern is if individuals do not wish to pay for parking, they'll go out into the neighborhoods and start parking in front of homes. So at this time, I'm not in favor of it. Thank you very much.
Okay. And Ms. Coburn, we'll have you answer this question first. Do you think that the city is currently allowing too much construction of new homes? Are the new homes too large, too small, just right?
Well, that is a great question. Everybody has their opinion on like, what is too big or too small. For example, in Old Village, we have had some new development. I think it's been tastefully done, and it's been very welcoming, looks tastefully in our community at this point in time. I don't have opinion whether it's too much or too little. Everything has been tastefully done so far. And, you know, it brings in, you know, new families to our community. So that's what I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Minton.
Yeah, this is, I think, a difficult question, one that I thought about a lot. So new developments happening in the city, tearing down, in some cases, pretty good homes that could be lived in just to add another floor, to change the style a little bit. Unfortunately, I have not come up with a solution in mind to that issue just yet. I have some personal experience, though. My wife Jessica and I bought our first house two years ago in the city, and we were competing with developers who wanted to also purchase a home. So I think there is a real issue where young people or people in general are priced out of getting a home in the city of Plymouth. So I think it's something that needs to be considered. I think some of the changes that have happened with zoning, especially around restricting the heights and then the house footprint on the lot, some of those changes have been good to help, to help it so, you know, you don't just have massive houses covering the entire lot. But it's something that needs to be considered for the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell.
Ah, another tough one. So I have been very supportive of some of our recent ordinances that have affected or tried to address some of these issues. So reducing the floor area ratio down to 35% of the lot size has been, I think, a good ordinance for the city. This year, we've passed the impervious surface ordinance, which limited solid concrete on lots. But I think we still have some work to do about the negative impacts that this development can have on neighbors and neighborhoods. And we live really close together in a lot of sectors of town, and this can really negatively affect neighbors, and I don't like that. And so I think that is an area of our ordinances that we can look at and probably improve to make it a more positive experience for the neighbors who have building going on around them.
Thank you. Mr. Ramatsky.
Yeah, thank you. So I really do like to see responsible development in the city. I think it's great that folks want to move here and sometimes amend the homes that they are moving into. But it has to be done the right way, and we have to uphold the rules and laws we have on the books. You know, I've spoken with a lot of neighbors who, like Mrs. O'Donnell said, have had some negative interactions with development on their block or in their neighborhood. So it has to be done very carefully. There's also a survey just completed recently on what folks are wanting to see more or less of in the community. I think those results will be available in the coming weeks, and I'm more than happy to support what the residents want to see in the city. You know, if it's smaller build heights, or if it's the addition of additional dwelling units or the exclusion of additional dwelling units, I'm open to what residents want. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Deal.
Yeah, I think this is a hard one. I don't think that we can necessarily get involved with whether or not somebody wants to do an addition onto their house or renovate their house. I think what we have to do as a city is to make certain that we're adhering to the ordinances that were set. I'm very proud of the work that our planning commission does, the work that the ZBA does in terms of holding builders, developers to those rules and regulations. I, too, have been very supportive of some of the changes that have been made in terms of reducing the size of, you know, how much space can be used on a lot. So I don't necessarily feel that we can decide whether or not somebody can do a renovation on their house, but we have to, and we should, and we be consistent with adhering to all those ordinances that are in place. And I do think our boards do do a very good job at that.
Thank you. Ms. Phillipsack.
Well, I live on a street that took on most of the hits for a lot of the tear downs and building of the new houses. Like I say, I live in a 1958 small home. And yes, it is hard on the residents, but it is a beautification of the neighborhood. The housing market is whackadoodle right now. It has been whackadoodle for the last five years. And you're right, people come in and they're competing for homes and having to pay out costs like we've never had before. But we are very blessed in the city of Plymouth with our ordinances and the ZBAs and the planning commission in making sure that we're looking at setbacks and things of that nature in the heights of the homes to make sure that we're maintaining the concept of Plymouth and our cities and our homes. Yes, it is challenging for the neighbors. I've lived it, and you do survive, especially I've had all three sides of my home renovated every year for four years in a row. But, you know, you get great neighbors, you get great homes, and it increases the value of our own homes. So we work continuously. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Picard.
I do think some of the changes that have been made recently have helped with the lots or with the footprint sizes. One of the places I think we still need to improve on is the number of condos and the large PUD developments. A lot of times, it's the best-laid plans. You know, we all looked at the daisy wall for how long before that finally came down. You know, the original plan that that was going to be incorporated into the condos kind of fell through. Currently, on our side of town, we have the Christian Science Church that's trying to put in. It started out, I think, as 30 condos, and now it's down to 24. Some of these where we have discretion, and with the PUDs, we do have discretion, even if they check all the boxes, it's supposed to be a win-win. And at least in that situation, all the residents in that area, it's a loss for them. So that one will never be a win-win situation. I think we need to definitely disapprove of those.
Thank you. Mr. Minton, you'll answer this question first. How would you work to make everyone, regardless of religion, race, or gender, feel comfortable in Plymouth?
That is a great question. So I think, you know, we look at the strategic plan for the city, and it involves things like diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I think that those are important things to think about. I think some people, whenever they hear those terms, they may either fully embrace them or roll their eyes. It could be one or the other. And I just want to say that I think it's important to define the terms and to really talk about what this really means. So starting off with diversity, it's just a fact. It's how people are different from one another, any number of characteristics, as those mentioned in the question or others. Inclusion is what we do with that diversity. Do we want to invite people in, or do we want to turn people away? Do we want to connect with each other, or do we want to divide us apart? And I'm in favor of connecting us, bringing us together, using empathy, and really trying to understand where everybody is coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell.
Well, I think Plymouth is a welcoming community. I hope everyone who lives here feels that. And there are programs that we have done in the past and continue to do. Know Your Neighbor was a great program that I would like to bring back. It was a program where you could get to know people of all sorts of different walks of life. I think those sorts of programming opportunities are still very relevant and would go a long way toward making sure that everyone feels included and part of our city. Certainly, everyone is welcome here.
Thank you. Mr. Ramatsky.
Yeah, through my conversations, I've found that people are generally very happy. You know, I think neighbors get along well here, and it's something that makes Plymouth unique. That being said, I think more community involvement from the government side can always be beneficial. We have city commission meetings in the parks in the summer, which are great. You know, every time, for the last two summers I've been going, new people show up every single meeting who haven't been to one before, didn't even know it was a thing, and it's wonderful. So as we talk about what we're going to be doing with parks and rec and things that really impact our neighborhoods, I'd like to see more involvement in the communities and really making everyone feel welcome because they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Deal.
I agree. I would hope that everybody would feel welcome into our community. And I believe that trying to connect people is very important as well. Parks and Rec, this millage that is up right now, is a great way to possibly do that. When I look at some of the parks right now, are all of the parks really, do they provide a swing set for every child that maybe wants to be on a swing set? Is there a slide for those children to go down those slide? I think this gives us an awesome opportunity to provide that openly within our community so that all residents could be using, all children could be using the parks and recs. I think as a commission, yes, we can always do more work on that. I think there are programs that we can bring back, that we should be bringing back, to try to bring that welcoming so that people do feel welcome to learn about something different. I remember when, my first year on commission, we did something where we traveled to different churches, and it was a wonderful experience to go to all these different churches. So I would hope that we could reinstitute that.
Thank you. Ms. Phillipsack.
I think diversity, inclusivity, and including all of our citizens in what we're doing is important. I have seen over the 30 years, our city continued to grow and flourish with diversity, and it makes me proud to live here. I think with bringing out our city commission into the parks, it allows everyone to participate, looking at our parking and ADA and making sure that even at the cultural center, making sure our bathrooms are appropriately ADA. It's important that we make sure that we're including all of our citizens and visitors into what we're doing here. And so we can, we do better. I guess anybody could really do better. But for me and my heart and soul, I think we're doing a good job, but we can always improve. And we'll look at programs that we can continue to provide for all individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Picard.
I think if anybody goes to music in the park or an art in the park, they'll see Plymouth is inclusive. I mean, if somebody's coming in order to test out if we're inclusive or not, I think that's, they've got a little bit of a chip on their shoulder. I mean, we need to respond. If there is an issue, we need to respond appropriately. We don't need to prove that we are inclusive. Just walk through the city. Walk through the city any Wednesday night, and you'll see it.
Thank you. Ms. Coburn.
Thank you. I think we do that in Plymouth. I know in Old Village, we have several events throughout the year. We have meetings on a regular basis, and it's all walks of life. We are definitely one big happy family. I'm excited for the upcoming Chili Cook Off. And I know when I'm out and about, it all starts with a conversation, you know? And I think we do a great job, you know, having a wide variety of topics, events, et cetera. Susie mentioned the playground. That reminds me, when I was on the fundraising chair position for our playground, we made sure it was welcoming to all children, their abilities, disabilities, that everyone could feel included. And I hope to bring that skill set when I am elected on November 7. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell will start this next question with you. What one policy or decision set by the city commission would you change?
I'm going to answer this one with, what would I change about a vote that I've made? And it is one from the beginning of my tenure, and it was a fire truck that we were voting on. And the truth is, I didn't really understand what the proposal was. And so it taught me a lesson, which is sometimes you don't know what you don't know, and you have to ask questions and get really educated. And so what I've learned as being a city commissioner is that I have to really go deep on the issues that I'm looking at. And so that, it was a fairly harmless vote. It went through just fine, as it should have. But that is one that I think about sometimes, and I have never made that mistake again of not knowing fully what I was looking at.
Thank you. Mr. Ramatsky.
Yeah, thank you. It's an interesting question. I think we talk a lot about making new law, making new ordinance, but do we often look at what's on the books and what might be antiquated? Because I've been through the code as much as one can go, and some of it is quite antiquated. I believe there's some rules about having a kennel license if you have three or more dogs. Some of my neighbors have three or more dogs. I doubt they have a kennel license. But one that's a little bit more lighthearted is a rule that I think goes back to a time when downtown was a little bit more turbulent in the evenings. And in the DDA, if you're an establishment that has food and alcohol, you can't have a dance floor. It's illegal. You know, it's like, I've been told there's a movie called Footloose about this. So, you know, maybe that's one that I would revisit. Let the people dance.
Thank you. Ms. Deal.
I can honestly say, in the eight years that I have served, I haven't regretted anything that I have voted on. I also take a lot of time before I have to make a vote on something to do my homework, and I encourage everybody to do that homework. I've always said that I feel that you need to vote what your heart is telling you also. So I can honestly say, I don't, there isn't a vote that I have made or a policy that I feel that we voted on that maybe was a wrong policy or that, you know, I have voted no on things. Something that I don't feel that I can support that, I'm okay if I'm that person. I have to vote my heart. I have to vote what I feel is best for the community. Yes, we do have some ordinances that, yeah, I don't think there is a kennel license here in the town. And, you know, our boards do a great job at bringing that stuff up and trying to get us current. Our administration does a great job at getting us current on those things as well. But I think the best thing that I can do as a city commissioner is just for you to know that when I have to take a vote on something, I do my homework to make certain that I'm making the right vote.
Thank you. Ms. Phillipsack.
I would not change any of the votes that I have made. I feel that I am accountable to the citizens of Plymouth, as well as the businesses of Plymouth. And we, as a commission, vote what we feel is correct and what we feel the citizens want. So I may not vote in unison with the commissioners, but I think I'm voting true to what I believe the citizens and the businesses want. And so I stand by those votes. They may not be, I voted no on things, but that's okay, because I'm representing all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to repeat this question, just so we can get back to the question. What one policy or decision set by the city commission would you change? Mr. Picard.
Well, I'm going to continue on the vein that we've already started. So I think it wasn't a, and it wasn't anybody on here. I think the mayor has kind of fessed up when he originally proposed, the original proposal for the $15 outdoor dining, which obviously was a mistake. But there was a different commissioner, again, none of the women on stage, who said, well, that really wasn't a serious number. And, but this was a, it was something that was brought to the board and could have been voted on that night, could have passed if it wasn't, if it wasn't tabled. And so I think it's a little disingenuous to say it wasn't a serious number. It was picked and put into the proposal, and so I think that's what my example will be.
Thank you. Ms. Coburn.
Thank you. Well, I've never been in the position as of yet, but when I get elected, I certainly probably will have a time where I will have to, you know, think about policies or decisions. I will always do my research. I will always represent the citizens and our small businesses, whether they're small or big. It's about what our community wants. Again, you know, I carry that wonderful card with me, the five rules of decision-making, and I will, you know, check it off. I think it's tremendous with making decisions. And I am always okay with asking difficult questions and not afraid to elaborate and get down to the nitty-gritty. I just want to always do what's right for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Minton.
Yeah, so I think Josh may have stole my thunder there a little bit. I remember a couple months ago, I think Commissioner Kehoe brought up the fact that a business was trying to open up, not in the DDA, and they wanted to have a dance floor. And she thought it was for the whole city, and I would have thought the same thing. I wouldn't have even known that that was a thing. But it's kind of interesting to then look at the history. Plymouth has been here for a long time, and to see the origin of these rules and laws harkens back to a time that it's good to reflect on and to not make those same mistakes in the future. So I don't think there's any major policy or position or ordinance that really needs to fundamentally change immediately. I think we live in a great city. I think there's just some things on the edges there, like this dancing policy, that we could definitely change. So, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Romatsky, we'll start this next question with you. We got two questions about trees, and I've blended them together, even though they're a little bit different, but hopefully you can, your answer will address both of them. We are losing old growth trees. What can we do to reverse this, if anything? And the second one is, what is your opinion about the city's restricted tree ordinance, which some thinks, think conflicts with private property rights?
Two loaded questions. Well, I really appreciate our tree canopy. It is a place for native pollinators, for animals, flora and fauna. I've done some work with the organization Keep Plymouth Leafy, which is a great, great organization that works to clean up parks, plant trees, and among other things. You know, that being said, there are some difficult circumstances where I've met neighbors that have had large trees in their backyard that they thought might have posed a significant danger to young kids playing. In those cases, I would like to think there'd be a way to compromise so that especially younger families who can't afford to pay exorbitant sums into a tree fund might be able to find a happy middle ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Deal.
I would not be in favor of the tree ordinance. I do believe that if you purchase property, that is your property to do what you would like. I hate to see trees taken down, but I understand that trees need to be taken down. I am a portion of helping take the trees down in my yard, but I've also put trees back on them. So I believe and try to do a replacement of tree, but I don't feel that it is out of ability, with our position to say that you cannot take a tree down if you're going to be doing some type of improvement, renovation, and you're following the rules of the planning commission, and you're meeting all of their power requirements, and the tree needs to be taken out, I believe that it is the owner's right to take our tree down.
Thank you. Ms. Phillipsack.
I have been the homeowner that has had to take down multiple trees from ash-bore disease because they were diseased, ready to fall down. I lost evergreens because they also got diseased. I tried to save them, that didn't work. But those were all the costs that I incurred as a homeowner. And I agree with Commissioner Deal. I think, first of all, I love our trees. I love our canopy. I see all the new trees we've planted, and I love them. But I think it is also a personal choice. And I think that we need to allow people who buy their homes, pay for their homes, pay their taxes. They also have a right, if they're going to do an expansion, to look at what they need to do to improve their homes. So I think it's a personal choice, too, though we do have a lot of rules and regulations that provide us guidance on what we should plant because of diseases and et cetera. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Picard.
Before I moved to Plymouth, I was in Livonia, and when Emerald Ash Bore went through the neighborhood, it just decimated our neighborhood of trees. So I understand the need to diversify and all that, but I won't put Commissioner Deal out on her own, because I do, I also think that was a big mistake. I think the first time I met Kelly, I thanked her, because it was Keep Plymouth Leafy that planted a new tree in the front of our house. I think by far, this is something that should have been done on a voluntary basis to start, not, you know, heavy-handed with fees for all this stuff. I think if most residents, if you tell them, hey, you know, these are five trees, you know, pick one of these, and especially if we'll pay for half of it, you'll get 80% of the residents on board. So thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Coburn.
Thank you. I absolutely love nature, and I truly appreciate the fact that we have somebody such as Kelly O'Donnell, who started Keeping Plymouth Leafy. I remember hearing about it, and I couldn't wait to go play in the dirt and put in new trees and keep everything looking beautiful. I love walking through the town and seeing the leaves fall. It looks absolutely beautiful, definitely curb appeal. I do believe that it's the homeowner who has the decision-making in regards to their trees. Granted, we need to have ordinances, and I think that, you know, when a tree is ready to go on to its next path in life, a bonfire, or, you know, a new desk or what have you, that we could, you know, replace it. So that's, that's what I got. I think we need to keep our city full of beautiful trees and wonderful, wonderful views. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Minton.
Yeah, so as far as the legal ramifications of this ordinance, so I'm definitely not a lawyer. For anything that I would vote on, and there could be legal jeopardy, I'd want to consult with the city attorney. I believe that was done in this case as well. I'd have to check to make sure. But there are plenty of ordinances in the city that affect people's property. You know, you can think of, can you place yard signs in your yard? How large can it be? Where can you put air conditioning? Can that be in the front of the house or not? How large can the footprint be? We have ordinances that deal with all of these things. So there are rules that are within reason that govern how city resident properties look. And in this case, I think having more trees in the city and having the possibility of replacing the tree canopy and increasing it over time is very reasonable, and I think it's a great policy that we have. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell.
Yeah. I am supportive of the tree ordinance. It's part of why I got involved in government in the first place. You're exactly right. We have lots of rules about, you know, what we can do on our property and what we can't. The tree ordinance recognizes that a tree canopy is a part of a common good in our neighborhoods. It's not just about what's on our property, it's part of the entire neighborhood. And so there's no rule in the tree ordinance that says you can't take a tree down. It's just asking everyone to contribute to that public good in the neighborhood and to contribute to the character of the neighborhood. And so the tree ordinance is truly a compromise between folks that want a stronger ordinance and folks that want a more lenient one. And so I think we've landed on something that works for our city and contributes and keeps the canopy growing, even as we are allowing homeowners to remove trees as needed.
Thank you. Ms. Deal, we'll start this one with you. What would you do to make sure city residents are engaged and able to share opinions? Opinions, sorry.
Well, you have city commissions that, meetings that you can come to Mondays a month. I would encourage you to do that. Anytime we hold extra meetings, I would encourage residents to come to those meetings as well. I would encourage, if you have questions on anything, you can email any one of us, you could call any one of us. I know that when I run into people in the community, if I hear them speaking about a topic, that maybe I don't think that they've got all the information. I have no problems with stopping and introducing myself and just saying, I've overheard your conversation, can I please at least give you the correct information? I think, I feel, as a city commissioner, I am very open and willing to talk to anybody. So I would just encourage people to come when we're going to be doing the, if our Parks and Rec Village passes and we are going to be designing different parks, I would encourage everybody to come to those. When we're in the outdoor meetings, we're in the parks, I would encourage you to come to those so that you can hear what's going on.
Thank you. Ms. Phillipsack.
I agree with Commissioner Deal. I think it's our obligation as city commissioners to get out there into the community and get the word out. I have encouraged individuals to join or to submit an application to be considered for some of our commissions or volunteer committees. It's also coming to the commission meetings. You can't make it, you can watch it online, or you could come and visit us in the parks when we're in your neighborhoods. And getting out there and dialoguing with each other, but as well as us, so that we can get the right information out. And if you have a question, just call or email us. We do answer those emails and calls. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Picard.
It's kind of an odd goal to say we need to get them, get the public to be engaged. I mean, I think they're engaged at the level that they want to be engaged. We've seen people get more engaged lately because they're not happy. I mean, the number of people that showed up to support the pen or support the outdoor dining, they are engaged, and I think it's just human nature. You're more engaged if it's something you don't like than it's something if you like. But certainly, I think it's something we need to make sure, maybe not engaged, but informed. And I think we do need to make sure, especially with Prop 1, was mentioned the other day, I'm still out, you know, knocking on doors, and people are still asking, what is Prop 1? We need to be able to somehow get more information out to the public on the things that should matter.
Thank you. Ms. Coburn.
Thank you. As far as engaging our residents, I think we get a great turnout on a regular basis at our commission's meeting. I think everybody's very welcoming. They talk, you know, amongst the residents, amongst commissioners. I think we've done a great job as far as, I know I've had the opportunity to meet with some of the commissioners for, you know, a coffee or, you know, just an impromptu when I'm out powerwalking, and they've always have taken the time to talk and make us feel welcome. Going forward, when I'm elected, I hope to continue that momentum and even more, that my door is always open. You can email me, you can call me. I want you to let me know what your concerns are. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Minton.
Thank you for the question. So I think community engagement is critical. I think that people live their best lives when they live within a strong, well-connected community where they know their neighbors and they know what's going on in their city. I think there is some onus on city commissioners and city administration to do some outreach into the community, to engage people, to let them know what's going on, whether that's going door-to-door, or advocating for block parties, or, you know, going to the events we have, like Music in the Air, other DDA events, to go and talk with people and engage with them and let them know what's going on. I think additionally, online recordings have been great for city commission meetings and other meetings that we have in the city. I think it's been great for transparency and accessibility, and it lets people know they can go reference the primary material there. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell.
Yeah, this is one of my favorite parts about being a commissioner, is engaging with the residents and talking to the residents. So a couple things that I've done as I've been commissioner, so I run a Facebook page called Positively Plymouth, where I share recaps about the city commission meetings, keep people informed. I send a monthly newsletter to about 500 residents, and would love to have more of you join, if you would like to give me your email address. And I have a Calendly that anyone can sign up to get a phone call with me. So that's calendly.com/O'DonnellKelly. Finally, if you come to a city commission meeting and I'm on the commission, you will see me smiling at you when you speak. It's nerve-wracking, I know, I've been there. But if you're brave enough to get up and stand on the podium, even if you're really mad, I will smile at you, because I love it. It's one of my favorite parts of the meeting, and I want to encourage more people to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Romatsky.
Yeah, thank you. So I think citizens do have a lot of avenues to be engaged if they want to be, but I also think we could do a little bit more with community outreach. One survey that gets referenced a lot, that was done 2021 by Eastern Michigan University is great, covered a lot of topics. But when I was looking at the number of respondents under the age of 30, it was only 3%. That made me kind of sad, because I'm in that category. But beyond that, I think it didn't capture maybe some of the sentiment that our younger residents might have had. So more community outreach is great. I think we can lean into the channels that we already have digitally, whether it's through Facebook, through Instagram, through email, to make sure that people that do want to get involved have the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more question, but it's a quick one. It's just a yes or no question. Ms. Phillipsack, we'll start with you. Friends of the Pen is a registered 501(c)(3) organization. Do you believe it should be given tax-exempt status? Yes or no?
This is, this is under litigation, and as a city commissioner, we are, pardon? It's not something that we can talk about and what's going on with them. I think that they are a tax, they are a 501(c)(3). They are going through the correct channels that they need to at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Picard.
At this point, there is procedure, which, if they are all, if it's against the law, let's see why they're not qualified. I think that's kind of a procedure.
Thank you. Ms. Coburn.
Well, it's a very difficult question. In regards to, there's, you know, different things to look at. It is under litigation. I don't have all the facts in front of me. If I had all the facts in front of me, I could speak with intelligence, which I always want to be able to speak the truth. So I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay. Mr. Minton.
Yeah, so, I mean, I personally believe that they do, but once again, as has been stated, not a legal expert in that. So I think it is important, the transparency, to let people know what the gap is, why they to let people know what the gap is, why they don't qualify for it right now. If you can't speak about that for legal reasons, to state that as well. Um, so definitely want to follow the, the letter of the law there. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell.
Uh, I, the city commission doesn't play a role in this, or have an official role in this question, but, um, I want the Penn Theater to be as successful as possible, as soon as possible in their quest to be tax-exempt, um, within the confines of the laws that govern the tax exemption, uh, status. And I am far from an expert in those specific laws.
Thank you. Mr. Ramatsky.
Also not a lawyer, but I do work with comparables all the time. And, you know, if you look at 16 other theaters that have this, and we're the one that doesn't, you have to wonder, are, are we the one that's wrong? And, uh, yeah, the city commission can't decide that, but the city does hire its successor. Um, we can hire successors that maybe have a bit of a better view and understanding of how Plymouth operates, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Deal.
Um, and I would echo what Kelly said as well. This isn't something that the city commission votes on. It is under litigation right now. Um, I do hope that they will qualify. I do hope that, um, they will get the information that they're needing so that they can be tax-exempt. Uh, we want them to be successful. They are a gem in our community. We realize the value of their importance. Um, I am not a lawyer by any means. Um, so I can't necessarily say, um, what they're doing or what they're not doing. Um, I can just say that there's a process that needs to be played out, and, um, as soon as the process is played out, a decision will be made.
Thank you. Wasn't exactly a quick yes or no, but we appreciate all of your input. It was educational. We'd like to now start with our closing statements in reverse order. Each of the candidates has a one-minute opportunity to give a closing statement. Ms. Coburn will start with you.
Thank you so much for taking your time out today. It's an honor to be in front of everyone, uh, residents, commissioners, and thank you in front of the League of Women Voters. Um, I am definitely, you know, looking forward to living with the city, um, in regards to, um, being elected on the 27th, and I'm asking for your vote. If you have any questions, feel free. I will leave for afterwards. I will give you my email, my cell phone, et cetera. And I don't want you to have to take it back from me anything. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Picard?
In my intro, I forgot to mention I'm, uh, a computer engineer by trade. And, uh, I've worked on big systems, designing big systems top-down, and worked on the little bitty details from the bottom up. Uh, I think my skill set and my own talents, uh, really lend myself to, to this job, much better than they do for campaigning for this job. Uh, and so, uh, please, just, uh, I've got a Facebook page, Picard for Plymouth, uh, where I've got some of my views, uh, out there. You can look that up. Uh, and I appreciate your vote in November.
Thank you. Ms. Phillipsack.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for allowing us to come together and speak to everyone on our thoughts and the precedences that have been set before the city commission. I love being a city commissioner. I love living in this city. I've lived here for 30 years. I'm not going anywhere. But I also love the fact that I'm able to represent the citizens and the businesses on a forward movement so that Plymouth continues to be a destination. We embrace our historical district, and we move forward, but prudently, strategically, and fiscally responsibly. So, thank you, and I hope that I've garnered some of your votes for moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Deal.
Yes, thank you. Thank you again for hosting us this evening. Thank you again for coming out and for all the wonderful questions. We covered a lot of topics tonight, and that's what commission is about. And I think the important thing to remember is, we can differ. We can differ on what our thoughts are and what it is we think, but the important thing to remember is that we're a team. And we're a team here to represent you. We want to listen to you. Um, yes, we look for your input. We invite you to come to our meetings. Um, but we can't do that unless you come to us. We can strategic plan to figure out what we can do to better come, our community, but we do invite you and ask you to get engaged with us as well. Please, you're always welcome to call me, to email me. Um, I'm happy to meet with anybody. I'm happy to run you over with a car at Westbourne. Um, so, but no one to do it. Um, but, um, I look forward to being a part of this team again. It's been a great years, eight years that I have served, um, and I like being part of this team. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ramatsky.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. Uh, it's really been a pleasure to be part of this civic process thus far, and just to see how engaged the community has been. Plymouth is a special place. William Stark Weather built a little log cabin on the corner of Ann Arbor Trail, uh, Main Street, 198 years ago, I think. And the only thing that excites me more about thinking of our history is thinking of our future. So I would love to represent you, be a voice, be your voice on the city commission, and I hope to earn your vote this fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell.
Uh, we are so lucky to live here. Um, it, this is a wonderful community, and, um, I just feel lucky to have been able to represent all of you, so thank you for that. Um, I, I hope to be able to continue to do that in the next few years. Um, our opportunity here is to really, um, capitalize on what makes Plymouth great and, um, engage in some caretaking of what makes a community desirable and valuable. And to me, that's controlled and reasonable growth and development. Um, ordinances that support safe, character-filled neighborhoods with valuable properties, and policies that balance economic growth with access to public goods. So, um, thank you again, and I, uh, look forward to continuing to represent all of you, um, for another four years, hopefully.
And Mr. Minton.
Thanks again to everybody who was present today or is watching online, and those who asked questions, um, and made this event happen today. I am optimistic about this city's future. If elected, I want to continue to make this a desirable place to live and to be a unifying voice on this commission. My top three priorities are to have effective and efficient government. My second priority is to further connect residents of the city to make this a stronger community. A great way to do this is by expanding opportunities through the recreation department, to give everybody every opportunity to meet one another. My third priority is to lower the cost of living for residents in the city. And I think this can be done by facilitating home energy efficiency upgrades. These are, they're brand-new tax incentives that came out from the federal government and state government that can make your house much more efficient and help combat climate change. And I want to help facilitate those ideas to make it so it makes sense for residents. The return on investment is there, and everybody has the information they need. Thank you.
Thank you. We thank the Plymouth City Commission candidates for their willingness to serve the public and to the audience for such thoughtful questions. I'm sorry we couldn't get to all of them, but I think we got a good cross-section of issues here tonight. We thank the city of Plymouth for allowing us to use this venue for the forum tonight, and also to our league members who helped with this, especially our producer, Val Nelson. Our forum has been videotaped and can soon be viewed on our website, lvnorthwestwayne.org, as well as the city channel, I understand. Besides considering the candidates featured in tonight's forum, or before considering them, you may want to go to our Vote 411 website and review the responses that they have given to some additional questions. They may give you more insight into what their views are. Please note that ownership of the recording or transcripts resides with the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. The candidates or their supporters may not use portions of the forum or any audio clips, video clips, or transcripts for political advertising or other purposes without the written permission of the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. Sorry we have to say that. The League of Women Voters is providing this forum as an opportunity for candidates to express their views related to their candidacy. Statements expressed by the candidates are not endorsed nor opposed by the League of Women Voters. Also, the league does not certify any candidate response, responses to questions as accurate. So voters are encouraged to fact-check information shared at this forum. Election Day is November 7th. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and if you're not registered to vote, you can do so up through Election Day. But within 14 days of the election date, registration must be done at the office of the city clerk. All registered voters can vote by absentee ballot. Remember that you must first fill out and return an absentee ballot application to the city clerk before a ballot can be mailed to you. We, we urge all of you to be participants in our democracy by making educated choices in the election. This concludes our forum this evening. Thank you all for coming.